The Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors meeting, special meeting for Wednesday, November 12th to order. Please rise as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And we will recognize the Assistant Township Manager to provide the meeting procedures and the call to roll.
Thank you, Chair. We'll start with the roll. Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Heller. Chair, you have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. So, the Board of Supervisors did meet on Monday in executive session to discuss various items of personnel. Also, I did want to take a moment, since yesterday was Veterans Day, to thank our veterans and welcome an opportunity, anyone in the audience or on the board that wanted to raise your hand if you're a veteran, and want to send your, our thanks and gratitude for your service to our country. At this time, are there any public comments? We'll start in the room, ask you to state your name and neighborhood of residence and to try to keep your remarks within five minutes. Any public, okay. Seeing no public comment. Anyone online? Seeing none. Reports and presentations are November diversity, equity, inclusionary activities and acknowledgements. We have National Native American, American Indian, and American Native Heritage Month, and the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women is November 25th. No unfinished business, so we'll move to new business with our consent agenda. We have the approval of the Township Manager's appointment of the Police Chief. Do I have a motion to accept that?
This is Patty, so moved.
And do we have a second?
This is the second.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Ms. Strickland. I did not ask if anyone wanted to pull this, but if there, is there any discussion?
Just a little bit. There was like, insert name here in what I see on the agenda.
Thank you. Yes, it was released prior to being able to update that. So, it's been updated, I believe, as of today. So, the current agenda digitally, that can be found on our township website, does reflect the name of our Police Chief, if appointed by the Board.
So, yeah, it is, it is on there. Any other questions, Mr. Patterson?
So, for the future, when you say that there was a timing of the release, so you didn't want to release the name until the supervisors put it in there, or like, help me understand that for just a second?
Great question. It was drafted maybe two weeks ago for the prior meeting, the first meeting in November. And so, then it was moved into this. And so, we just had to finish some of our final logistics for, within HR and place. And so, it's been added to this agenda, as discussed in our exact session.
Yeah. That worked?
Any other questions?
I don't know. I'm open.
Yeah. And I can see that. Nice thing about our agenda software is we can put items in there ahead of time, but, you know, certain matters like personnel, like there, there's a lot of timing, like acceptance of the employment offer, background, you know, so you can't necessarily just, you don't necessarily just want to put that stuff out and have it intercepted prematurely. So, you know, just procedural staff, you know, just, you know, being cognizant of integrity and whatnot, so. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next, we'll have the public hearing to repeal Resolution 2025-30 and ratify a revised tentative agreement between Ferguson Township and Teamsters Local Union 764. And I will recognize the manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a narrative that further explains action following the public hearing held at the last meeting, at the first meeting in November. We had correspondence, the, as you may recall, presented in your agenda packet at the last meeting, indicated that the Teamsters would be ratifying their tentative agreement on that Wednesday, I believe, November 5th. And as part of that discussion and vote, it was contingent upon the proposed increase, as indicated in the narrative, for the arborist. And that was something that we were able to have some agreement in moving forward with the hiring of the arborist under a particular wage. The final negotiations did not reflect this, and so, we wanted to make sure that this was appropriately presented to the Board in a transparent way. And as also included in the agenda packet is the correspondence from the Teamsters representative, Ty Sees. And so, it's up to the Board at this point in time if you would like to, to honor and approve that wage rate for the arborist position into the CBA, at which point, if that is the action that the Board would like to take, we would repeal the resolution and then we would adopt the new resolution. And according to the Teamsters advocate, Ty Sees, it was already presented that they voted unanimously for the tentative, to ratify the tentative agreement upon this contingent item. Therefore, we would safely be able to say, we would be able to execute as early as the conclusion of this meeting and execution of the resolution.
Any questions for the manager?
So, the ask is to repeal the resolution that has one number that's incorrect?
That is correct.
And not incorrect, just revised? Is it incorrect or was it revised? Maybe, let's start there. Maybe my words are off.
What is in your current agenda packet is what the wage rate that you would be approving. So, it would be an increase of 194 in what we have done, the comparison with the regional municipalities for an arborist position, and this would bring them into comparative wages. So, the 194 in your agenda packet for the wage rate adjustment for the arborist position is what would be correct for Board to take actions today. So, the change, and the only change, from the last action taken would be the wage rate difference for the arborist position.
What are the other options besides repeal and ratify the revised tentative agreement?
That's a great question. I don't have that answer. I have this presented for the Board for consideration. Other options procedurally would, would be to repeal the action that you had from the last meeting, which was to accept the tentative agreement as it was written. So, in order to make the correction for the tentative agreement to be ratified by this Board, we would repeal that resolution and we would enact the new resolution. And the new resolution presented to the Board today is simply everything that you've already approved, with the exception of the change to the wage rate for the arborist position. So, procedurally, I'm not so sure that there would be a different change. Procedurally, we would repeal the action that you've taken for the resolution that was adopted at the last meeting, and we would enact a new resolution with the tentative agreement as the exhibit.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm on page eight of the big packet, and I see the email from Ty Sees. Got it. I don't see another resolution. Are you saying, when is that coming?
So, staff will go ahead and finalize that resolution, depending on the action today, and then it will be executed by the Chair and the Manager.
So, we're, okay.
The only thing that changes would be the actual tentative agreement with the one change to the wage rate for the arborist position. And so, the resolution would take note that it was repealing the action approved by Resolution 2025-30, and it would be replacing it with the tentative agreement with the sole change being the wage rate. So, that resolution will be finalized and presented for execution, and then we would be able to actually execute the tentative agreement with the Teamsters.
So, the ask for the public is to go look at the old one or remember what it said, and then if you have any public comment, which this is, that's what this is right here, public hearing on it, to then like, have any questions on the one change, which is to $1.94?
That is correct.
And go forward. Got it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I may have got out of order, but we will take public comment here momentarily. If there are none, I would open the floor for any public comments, starting in the room. This is a public hearing. If there are none in the room, anyone online wanted to participate in the public hearing? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing. Could I have a motion on this item?
Zamari, I move to repeal Resolution Number 2025-30 and replace with something similar to 2025-30 with a change of $1.94 for the arborist.
Do we have a second?
This is Patty, I'll second.
All right. Do want to consult with the manager that you got everything you would need there. It sounded like it. I just want to confirm you're, we're not missing anything.
Yes, really, this would be a public hearing to adopt the resolution. So, we would do a roll call vote after you have your discussion and your public hearing call.
Right. Yes.
Can we close the public hearing?
Okay, yeah, the public hearing's been closed, so, yeah. Any discussion, further discussion on this? If not, I would recognize the Township Manager to call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. This is a roll call vote to adopt Resolution to repeal Resolution Number 2025-30 of November 3rd, 2025, and ratify a revised tentative agreement between Ferguson Township and Teamsters Local 764, representing the Public Works Department, which will have a sole change revised incorporated, incorporating the 194 per hour wage rate adjustment for the arborist position and authorizing Township Manager to execute the final version on behalf of the Township. Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Patterson?
Point of order. What was just stated there was not the motion. Was, did she just take the motion, or was that just in furtherance of what's going to happen after the motion?
I believe it was furtherance of what was going to...
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah.
Supervisor Stevens?
Yes.
Supervisor Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. And Resolution passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have Preliminary Discussion Framework, Constituent Inquiry Management and Development of a Board Work Plan, and I will recognize the Township Manager.
Thank you, Chair. So, at the November 3rd, 2025, regular meeting, the Board discussed opportunities to strengthen governance alignment, improve communications, and clarify division of responsibilities between the Board and Administration. And while that official topic isn't back in its entirety for discussion, there was a great deal of reflection given and just kind of thinking, okay, well, there are maybe two frameworks that maybe we can, we can have some preliminary discussion to see if there's interest. In, in the first item, management of resident inquiries and constituent requests. I do believe, to some extent, we've kind of had this adopted, but perhaps maybe with some of the changes in recent years, it's kind of been a little fragmented. So, just kind of bringing back to the Board after hearing comments from Board members about making sure that if your constituents do come to you, of course, we have tools. We want to refer to the Citizens Request Portal, certainly empowering and encouraging them as it, as it feels appropriate and comfortable to you, referring them back to the Township so they can have the appropriate staff person. Sometimes that can actually just improve some efficiency or even a quicker response time. But ultimately, if you're feeling as a Board Member that that's something that you would like to be able to kind of facilitate, being able to have a process that we can organize into more of a system, and, and we can even internally then maybe have more of like a standard operating approach to how we're managing that. And there's always someone there, you know, whether it's me here or Jenna here, just having some general understanding, or new Board Members that are coming in as part of our Board Orientation Manual, we would be able to incorporate a very clear communicative narrative as to what, like, what the options are, where Citizens Request Portal, being able to go direct with the Township and have direct dialogue with staff, but also recognizing that as a Board Member, you can go direct with the Executive Assistant, and she would be able to facilitate that for you, as described in the agenda. And so, really, just trying to get a sense to see if this is responsive to the concerns that were expressed, and we will continue to carry out what that process might look like and bring a little bit more narrative to it for further, further shared understanding. Any comments or questions?
Comments or questions?
For item number one.
Why isn't the Citizen Request Center not viable?
I'm not so sure that it is not viable, and if that was shared, I, you know, I hope that there's, there's not some confusion around that. I think the Citizens Request Portal is absolutely a viable option and encouraged to be utilized. There were comments in the last Board Meeting where we had supervisors express that there are times that they want to be able to be responsive to their constituent. And so, in response to that and being sensitive, that that is something that is a priority for, for Board Members, maybe depending on the sensitivity of they're on the topic.
Yeah.
Having that, you know, email or that phone call directly to the, to the Executive Assistant can kind of help facilitate that in a more direct manner. But absolutely, the Citizens Request Portal is, is what's recommended. It's also strongly recommended that the residents of Ferguson Township call staff directly. I think oftentimes, for example, if there is roadkill in the roadway, for example, or there's a concern about traffic, you know, calling the Township directly and being able to talk to staff immediately is ultimately going to yield a very quick response. And in place of that, what we've also created is this digital platform, the Citizens Request Portal, and that is what we're really pushing for those that, you know, are digitally comfortable, being able to report some of their concerns. But of course, if they still want to have dialogue, call staff directly. But there are times I understand, as you're having conversations with your constituents, that you might want to go direct with the Manager's Office, being able to contact the Executive Assistant, and so, being able to kind of build out, what does that system look like? So, there's a shared understanding between all of you, the Executive Assistant, and myself.
So, maybe I can give you a reason why Citizen Request Center is not viable sometimes. It's because when someone logs an issue, they get their response done and they close it, and somebody closes it out, like, we did it, close out, when perhaps it isn't done. And so, I think folks are just asking for a little bit more communication. Maybe there's a way to kind of put 10 words instead of one to, you know, on that resolution of those things. I'm not sure if you've been through all of them, there's probably hundreds of them, thousands of them, you can't, but I know that I've seen some where it's like, done.
Okay, yeah.
So, that's probably, that's one reason why it may not be viable to some people. The other thing I was thinking about was a Board Member request, or Board Agenda Item Request line, and use the CRC to do that, and so, then it is directly to staff, and it's our, whoever takes those on, and it's the same method as, as an email or a phone call. And it's digital, and people can know that their thing has been seen and has been, yes, you have, you are now on the November 15th, 14th Board Meeting because you submitted this within seven days. That's an option. But I'm, I'm a big, big fan, by the way, of the Citizen Request Center. Big, big fan. It works.
Yeah.
Mostly. And, and there's some, there's some good numbers with it, we just need to keep that up.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for the feedback. Of course, we've made, you know, we made some, some comment, our notes here. You know, what, what I would say is that, yes, there are times that perhaps there are glitches and then software updates have to happen. And so, if it's not working, I would just want to, you know, be sure that everyone in the public knows, you know, picking up the phone and calling the Township, if that Citizens Request Portal is down, or if there's, you know, some interruption with our internet provider, or the individual resident's internet provider, you know, picking up the phone and calling the Township. And I appreciate you giving some examples as to reasons how it may not be viable, but I would also want to say too, that the Citizens Request Portal on the webpage, it explicitly kind of identifies like what you would be submitting and utilizing Citizens Request Portal for, right? So, I think it has a breakdown of different examples as to what you're, what you're bringing forward through Citizens Request Portal in a conversation with the Board, or submitting a topic for Board's consideration is not there. So, that would be a different approach. So, I do just want to kind of reiterate for clarification, that if there is a resident, per the Charter, that would like to bring something for the Board's consideration for a discussion, per the Charter, it would be, you know, a communication to the Township within seven days of a Board Meeting, requesting for a topic to be discussed by the Board. But the Citizens Request Portal is not necessarily monitored for that purpose, and it states very clearly what, what item Citizens Request for is utilized for. So, like, if there's a tree down, or there's a safety concern within a park, and I don't have the list in front of me, so I don't want to suggest that I can give you a comprehensive list. But I appreciate the comments for, you know, reasons why it wouldn't be viable, and I think you make a really good point in just kind of revisiting, call the Township. If a resident in our community has a concern, or there's something that they need addressed, or they would like addressed, call the Township. It'll be routed to the appropriate department for the appropriate Township staff person.
Yes, lots, lots of good feedback on that. I was going to say too, if my, my understanding of Citizens Request Center, that is oftentimes going directly to the responsible department. So, if an individual supervisor was to get something, and I've had cases where I've had residents like, hey, nobody's responding to me at the Township, or I'm dissatisfied, I find it very appropriate then to just take that directly to you and Jenna, because again, I, I, without knowing the whole context, I don't necessarily want to, you know, that, that's usually better handled by staff, so, you know, just something to keep in mind if, if we are using that to submit requests on behalf of a resident, whereas like, hey, there's just a tree down, like, sounds pretty straightforward, but...
Yeah, that's a good point.
I would also offer that when the communication is received from the Citizens Request Portal and the applicant or the submitter receives an email, and it might say that it's been received or that it's been addressed, that is the communication of that issue. So, it goes into, it's our work order system. So, some items, depending on what the request is, might belong to a specific contract that occurs at a certain time in the year, so, or it, it corresponds with other workloads. So, if there's, it might be something regarding visibility, site visibility, or a tree being down, or something like that, and there's, it's put into the work order queue, and the arborist will get to that at the appropriate time. Other items, then, there have been some items that I've talked to various residents about after they've submitted, wondering when something's going to be done, and it's been part of a paving contract or a sidewalk contract, and those get repaired at one time. We do those all at once. So, it gets added to the list, but it's not necessarily, not every item is a, we turn around and do it tomorrow. So, that is some of the discrepancy of where you're seeing, really, the, the response to the resident is, we've received this and we're aware of this issue, and we'll handle it appropriately from there, so.
Yeah, nothing, yeah, good, good thing to keep in mind. As a matter of fact, I had some constituent things that came in this past year where it's like, hey, this is under contract, or hey, here's our road projects, because we do nicely map out our road projects for the year, so there, so either your concern will be, will be addressed soon or within, you know, the next, the coming months, so. Okay. Mr. Heller, I think, I think that's Mr. Heller, it says Matt.
Yes, that is me. So, good afternoon, everybody. I appreciate the conversation, and I just wanted to kind of share to Mr. Patterson's comments here about the, you know, it's important to say in the example that Mr. Progar just gave, that, look, you know, it's not just done for, it's on the schedule, et cetera. So, a little bit more context is always appreciated. And to that point, because I direct a lot of folks that reach out to me, to the portal, because this is what it's for, right? Getting things out there, getting the direct line to the Township and having issues resolved or communicated back. And one of the things that I think is important for this conversation is I'm hearing, you know, and I don't have it pulled up in front of me, but it's not only important in my, my approach to say it, what the portal does, it's also important to say maybe what it does not do, and have some caveats there, like, this is not where you request agenda items, da, 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 but here's where you go for that, and kind of creating those links, if it doesn't already, is really saying, I'll just, you know, put the project manager hat on for a moment, it's not only saying what's in scope, but what's out of scope. This is not for these other things, this is where you go for that. So, if we could just maybe look at it through that lens too, and maybe it's already done, again, I don't have it pulled up in front of me, but I think that's an important one too, to really set the expectation appropriately for constituents. So, that was it, just wanted to offer that, and again, I really appreciate this conversation, and I think it makes a lot of sense to go through, you know, staff and the Executive Assistant and everything to, to have things funneled appropriately, so, thank you.
Good, good point there, Mr. Heller, and it gave me an idea, I'm going to defer to the Manager, is operations, put a possible FAQ page for contact or something.
Yes.
Like, hey, how do I submit an, an issue about this? How do I get something on the agenda, you know? So, yeah.
Because I'll just tell you the experience I have. So, a lot of times I have people of a certain age, of which I'm at the young end, that don't like to go online. They don't like to go through all of that. It's too many steps, it's too hard to navigate, it's this, and they also don't like to call the Township, because it gets into a queue, and then you have to wait, and who do I contact, and this, that, and the other thing. So, for your average citizen of a certain age, of which I'm the young end, they tend to think of, well, I told you, so, it's done. So, anyway, to your point, if there was in fact something, a name, well, okay, let's walk through this, and I'll show you on my phone, this is who you call, kind of thing, would be very helpful, because they don't distinguish between me and staff, they just think, well, you're Ferguson Township Supervisor, you, you can do it.
Yeah, I appreciate all of the feedback, all of the dialogue, and I, and I think what we have here, mentioned in item one, is a proposed approach or framework for consideration. We have other platforms, and, you know, I will also look to all of you too, and I know sometimes there are some barriers, and, you know, I think we have a resident, we just had call in a week or so ago, and so, there's sometimes, you know, whether it's just not being able to access technology, or not being comfortable with technology, and so, we certainly understand that there are going to be those exceptions, and we want to make sure that we're, we're providing some, some sensitivity and some assistance in that regard, but also then for those, you know, for the average person, also just kind of reminding them, you know, as the legislative body, you're happy to, you know, provide them with a contact name, or being able to provide them and kind of redirect them back to what our platforms are, and, and also what our roles are, established far beyond our time here serving currently. And so, just being able to, like I said, understanding we'll have moments where there will be some exceptions, whether it be because of access to technology or access even to a phone. Unfortunately, we do know that there are, there are folks that, that have those barriers, and we want to make sure that we have some, some resources available for those exceptions. So, that's not to suggest that we will not create a response or an alternative approach, but also just kind of helping folks know too, because, yeah, so, any other?
At the end of the day, we want everyone to be able to be heard and get a resolution, so, having that structure helps us to be able to achieve that.
And so, we built this in, so we have that as an option, so you can call on behalf of your constituents into the Township and submit that concern. So, that's what we took some time, and Jenna has collaborated, and we've talked through and made sure that we have a pretty comfortable and firm approach as to how we can create kind of that process for those sensitive situations. I just wanted to bring back for your consideration and awareness, in a transparent way, what's been considered in response to what was discussed at the last meeting.
Mr. Heller, did you take a second hand up, or was that a stretch?
I did, I did, only because, only in response to the FAQ thing, and I, I just want to also caution, because I know staff is already very busy, and, and my experience, maybe from the IT perspective, is that FAQs sometimes act as barriers, right? Where it's like, oh, go check the FAQs, et cetera. People are really looking for Google. They want to get onto a website, if at most, they want to put something in the search that says, you know, like, issue, or I have a problem. that says, you know, like, issue, or I have a problem, something like that. So I just want to encourage us to also look at, you know, AI in the future, to help triage some of this as well, because that's where, that's where the world is going. And as we look at our platform and what we're using here, we can do a lot of, have a lot of good responses with chat and other things through AI. And again, I would probably not invest too much in an FAQ site, as I will just say, what can we do to help make things more navigable with AI and other tools that are out there for our platform? So just wanted to share that perspective. Thank you.
What kind of AI funding exists for 2026, Mr. Heller?
Well, I think we could probably find something, but I would ask the platform that we use, what they're using to improve, what AI functionality they're using to improve their capabilities. Because a lot of the tools, as I've said before, are, are implementing AI in the background. And we just need to, and I'm sure we already are, but just keep asking the question about, hey, what AI tools are you doing to improve our search capabilities here? And if we ask those questions, and we lean into it, those should all be services that come along with our providers. But again, I'm not at the contract negotiation. Yeah, face for that, but I'm happy to go ahead and lend any expertise offline.
Great, great suggestions. Your, your comment, Mr. Stewart?
Nothing, I appreciate exactly everything he said, and I think that is great, but I also am advocating for the FAQ page, because there are, again, people in a certain age, of which I'm the young end, that understands that lingo, as opposed to the other.
Right, and, you know, I'm, I'm going to give staff or the manager the autonomy of how, you know, they, you know, what, what capacity they have, if they can, you know, put that out there, but, you know, we, we did have brought it up. And I totally agree with Matt, I'm not proposing we make some type of barrier. I've been on some websites where like, there's no way to penetrate through the FAQ page, and I just want to talk to a doggone person. So I could relate to that, but we're, you know, I don't think any of us are advocating that here. Ms. Strickland?
Thanks for this. So this was my understanding of the expected procedures and steps we would take, so that's what I've been operating under. So I, and I think it was good to put this into writing and get a standard operating procedure now that we have the Citizens Request Center. So I think this is great, to get things in writing, so that there's a generalized understanding. So I, I think this is great. I think just with, I think the FAQ page is a really good step forward. I think particularly, as Patty said, you know, people say things to us and don't understand any distinction between a staff and a supervisor. And so being able to direct them someplace that has all the contact information, but also some basic answers, yes, your, your item has been submitted, it may be part of a contract, you know, I, I think, you know, providing those things. So I would prefer the, a static FAQ page as opposed to AI answering questions. That makes me a little bit nervous, because we know that you're not always going to get the correct answer, so I would not be leaping into that. That would make me nervous.
You know, there's a search bar at the very, very top of the website, right? Yeah. Powered by Google right now, which is using AI. So I'm just saying that you may already be there, and you don't know yet.
I'm saying to answer the questions, that was the suggestion. Like, how do I, how do I submit a land development plan?
And I mentioned, if you were to put that question in that search, and there was a page designed to bring up that information, it would populate it, but.
Well, I really appreciate, I think we've got, you know, collectively, I've heard a lot of great feedback, you know, I think there's some overlapping themes, and maybe some contrasting themes, but I can assure you that I will take all of what you've shared, and you know, kind of compare that to recommendations from staff, who also are kind of triaging and fielding these calls daily, whether it be through phone calls, Citizens Request Portal, and also, you know, I know Jenna gets a lot of direct inquiries as well. So, so I appreciate, I think this was a really healthy dialogue. The intent was to share with you this process. So it's responsive to what I heard from a board member in the last discussion, which is, you know, sometimes I just want to be able to take a direct issue that I'm hearing from a constituent, and bring it to the township on their behalf. And maybe that's because they don't have access to, again, you know, technology, or there's some barriers. And so we wanted to make sure in a transparent way that this is an option for you, right? That shared, really appreciate the dialogue, lots of feedback. We'll take that forward as we continue to discuss internally how we might be able to continue to shape up diverse options for our residents. And then if there aren't any comments or questions, I'll move us right into item two, which is.
I, I am going to defer to Mr. Keo. He's been waiting patiently.
Bill Keo, Ferguson Township President. I'm a great fan of the Citizen Request Center. I think, I think that's clearly a step in the right direction with regard to communication with citizens, and a rather effective, quick way to identify fallen trees, and some of the, some of the danger issues that might exist that aren't picked up on an immediate basis by our staff. I have one clarification question. Does this procedure, which I thought was the procedure, and apparently has been, and you've been tweaking it, but does this procedure have any impact on the agenda discussion and ordinance that we had last week, and is currently on the books? Does this procedure have any impact on that?
So, would you like me to answer that?
Yeah, you, you may, yeah, yeah.
So this is being responsive to some of the dialogue that was shared as a result of that agenda item. This agenda, that agenda item is tabled, and will come back for board discussion. This is being responsive and trying to tee up into that discussion, if that answers your questions. It's not in place of it, it's recognizing that we're kind of moving through, and being responsive and moving through some of what was shared in that last discussion. So when we bring it back, it's not so heavy, that we're kind of taking a step into, back into that discussion.
And, and I appreciate that answer. I was looking for that three-word phrase, not in place forward, not in place of. That's, this is not intended to be in place of that procedure. The other thing that I want to comment on, because it's a communication issue related to this, I don't think that anything that the township does can replace the coffee and conversation efforts that we have located at various community sites for communication directly with our citizens and the staff. So as long as these improvements and tweaks don't get seen as an effort to, to replace the coffee and conversation activity, I, I think that's fine. But I can't think, I, I go to all, almost all of them, and have historically, and the discussion item, the, the feeling that the citizens have at sitting down in a non-sterile environment and chatting with staff is phenomenal. So as long as all of this doesn't take the place of that, I'm generally in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keo. And in response to your last thing, you might want to get out your planning book, but December 3rd, we are having coffee and conversation here.
I just want to say that this is not a sterile environment, we have new carpeting.
But yeah, there, the township calendar has been updated with that, so.
I'm sorry, I've got one more question.
Yes, Mr. Patterson.
So the Citizen Request Center is a tracking log, correct?
It's designed to be able to present data reports. So when you say tracking, it does retain the data, and we are, we have designed it to be able to present reports.
Okay.
Based on submissions.
Yeah. Okay. The process is the process, and I think it's nothing different than before. I guess we used to forward to you, now we're going to forward things to Jenna directly, got it, or whoever. Right? That was the.
So, so yes, but I also am saying as well, that, that as members of the governing body, you're really encouraged to refer your constituents back to staff. And the platform, and there are platforms to do that. There are platforms to do that by way of calling the township, coming into the township, using the Citizens Request Portal. But in response to what was heard from staff at that discussion in the last meeting, is that there may be times that you, as board members, feel, based on the circumstance, you need to, to be able to facilitate the, the information to the township on behalf of your constituent. Whether that be because, for example, a barrier to technology, or interacting with technology, or access to technology. This is the way that is available for you to do that. But this is not necessarily encouraged at all. It's recognizing that this is an option. But in, in the instances where you're talking with someone, and you say, you know, that's a really great point, please contact the township, or if you're aware, that's a planning and zoning item, you know, I'm sure if you call the township, they'll refer you to the right staff person. That's what's strongly recommended, just based on the role of the governing body, and in allowing staff to be able to facilitate those concerns of the residents. But again, recognizing that there will be occasions where you really feel strongly about needing to carry that forward to the township staff. This is the approach for you to do that.
I mean, I hear, let's just say, half the time, it's people that Patty's described, eh, they don't really care, they're just mentioning something to, to me, because they're, because I'm there. Oh yeah, Mari, this guy keeps his car parked on the sidewalk every day, jeez. You know what to do? Oh yeah, here, go here. And then I'm doing it with them, and then I ultimately do it for them, because I'm showing them with the click, and, and then boom, submit, and then township does some stuff. That's how I see some of these notices, by the way. And then the other half are at their wits' end, they haven't gotten responses. So like, I, I'm just, like, it's, we're, we're at this, again, it's 50/50, so it's not all of one, it's not all the other. It's, there's a balance of reasons here, and so we're, we're like, let's track this thing that we're already tracking, haven't finished yet.
So if there is a person.
And I think that's the problem to solve.
Right, and I, I completely understand that. And your avenue, of course, is to email and say, you know, I think we're having a staff, if it's a staffing issue, you, you should email me. And, or depending on the nature of that, you can email Jenna and describe, hey, it sounds like we're not being responsive, and this is the, you know, this is the resident, and this is the time, you know, this is who they tried to contact, and there's been no communication to them. I mean, I see that as a separate issue. That's a, that's a personnel issue, and we should talk about that as needed. But outside of that, that, you know, no response, there is recognition that there are going to be times where you're there. And I think what you just shared, Supervisor Patterson, is a great way to facilitate that, bringing up the phone, and kind of walking them through that, and letting them do it, and you're kind of walking them through it, so they're encouraged and empowered, and they're learning, kind of like, in real time. I think that's a really great approach. If you have the ability to do that, the time and interest, that's so helpful, I think generally, just for the average person, like, oh, okay, especially if the barrier is just like uncomfortability, and you're kind of walking them through that in real time, that's helpful. That's, I know that helps me, sometimes I tell, I'm like, hey, please, I need the visual here. And so I think that's a great approach to helping your constituents get to that, you know, overcome that barrier. Again, the feedback's been really great here. I think, you know, understanding that this is more in the operations, I think this is going to be instrumental in us continuing to carry back and evaluate. We do look at data reports, we, we listen to staff within each of the departments, we hear what's working. Believe it or not, we still get quite a few people who's just stopping randomly to talk about their issues. No call, no Citizens Request Portal, you know, no email, just a random stop-in. And so, you know, we are even, you know, with our limitations from, from a staffing level, even looking at how do we evaluate and maintain all of that? I mean, because the, the decisions from an operational level to be responsive to the different ways people show up to the township to report issues, it's not just looking at data at Citizens Request Portal, it's looking at all of the different ways that we hear from residents. It's a phone call, it's a stop-in, it's a scheduled meeting, you know, that was scheduled by phone, or online, or, you know, via email, it's a contact us, you know, submission through our website, it's a Citizens Request Portal. So we're looking at all of them, sometimes it's coming through Jenna. So again, I really appreciate the, the conversation, I think the feedback here has been great. And we can even keep having that conversation. But again, I do want to emphasize that if you're, if you are having constituents that are saying it's a more of a staffing issue, like there's no responses, I'm not seeing or hearing that. So that's a, I see that as a separate item. But if people are at their wits' end, I think that's something that I would like to hear from the governing body, whether it be individually or collectively, come to me so we can address those issues. Any other questions or comments?
Don't think so.
Part of the other discussion, as part of the discussion, and just being responsive to some of what was heard, you know, we talked a little bit about that board member request item, and while this conversation is not necessarily in place of the former discussion, it is recognizing that there's got to be a way, again, I think I said it in our last discussion, it doesn't have to, you know, moving away from what maybe isn't working, even if it's a tweak to the section of the, the Board Procedures document that's adopted annually, or if it's somewhere in between a different version, or the 50 different other options. Recognizing that each board member probably has, I shouldn't say probably, I know, because I get the emails from all of you, there are interests, bigger priority items that each one of you want to discuss. And so recognizing that staff has, you know, a work plan, they try to work off of, that we, you know, we organize, independent of board discussions at a public meeting. What's being presented to the board today is a proposed framework on how we have a work plan. Let's identify the list of items that you, as the board, would like to put on a list, and then let's go through a process to prioritize that list. So your, your areas of focus and interest are being discussed publicly, and then also being prioritized through some consensus held in a public meeting. So today's just that preliminary discussion on the proposed framework, and then in December, talking through what some of those priorities might look like for each of you, and then having further, deeper discussion in January. So we can then identify, okay, here are the goals, and here's what we're going to integrate into our work plan on a staffing level. This is, this is something we've done in the past, we've had a work plan, we did not put it in front of the board for consensus-based prioritization discussion. This approach is, is really going to be more transparent than maybe we've had it in the past. In the past, we would provide updates in the manager's report as to where we were with the work plan that was represented of board agenda, or board priorities that were discussed throughout meetings. Recognizing we can't do all of the things at once, but we can move things through and address them in accordance with what we're, you know, our work plan and the work that's done daily. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? If there are no questions from the board, Mr. Keo has a question. You could probably take the microphone, just share with the other person in the room if they want to talk.
In reading the annual board work plan paragraph, the first thing that came to mind to me was that, I don't know what the word facilitated really means. Does it mean hiring somebody to walk us through it? I don't know what it means. So I, you know, I, I asked that question. Number two, it seems to me that our stamp program goals actually have the, the list of things that we need to be striving toward. And what this tends to say to me is, your job with staff health needs to be to possibly prioritize. is, your job with staff help needs to be to possibly prioritize the top four things for the board from stamp, or the top five things, and that process, I think, has some value. I just wasn't sure what all this facilitating really meant, because we, we paid some good money to have a stamp program, it has a huge number of goals and direction for us, and I think many of them are very solid, but I, I think that you could be all over the map if you look at the whole body of that document. So what you all might need to do is just identify the three or four things out of stamp that you want to have as your primary work goal, work plan for the twenty-sixth year in response to item number two. Thank you.
Mr., Mr. Patterson? Me excited because it takes it and it puts it front and center, if we can have an open and constructive dialogue around it. And by the way, we already have a, this in place for our ABCs, right? They have to submit at the end of the year and prior to the next year. You know, their ideas for what they're looking to accomplish, we're really expanding that process here, so it's something that is practiced, it's something that is known, and again, I applaud this. So thank you again for leaning into this. When I saw this agenda item, I went, yes, yes, so thank you.
Any other board members? Otherwise, Mr. Keo's back.
I think this is an outstanding effort. While staff may not be real happy with me, I would like to propose that as part of your initial effort, that we look at not just the twenty-sixth year, but actually a five-year period, so that we can project even to our citizens what are going to be some of our priorities coming up, and that we can do some planning fiscally with regard to some of those priorities, recognizing that in a five-year priority plan, uh, things will change because the environment circumstances change. But much like our CIP, which is, is a huge document, and, and so on, uh, I, I think it would be great if we could start to say to our citizens in Ferguson Township, this is where we're headed over a period of time. That may make some of the short-term decisions that you have to make more understandable, that the public then has some reasonable expectation that we're doing this in preparation for two thousand twenty-seven, when we're going to take this issue on head-on. Just a thought.
It's interesting that Mr. Keo had brought that up, because again, supervisors' terms are four years, and understandably, there are sometimes priorities that don't necessarily get done in a year, or there's logistics that one year or the next year isn't maybe the best year to take a particular initiative on, but maybe year two, or three, or four is more appropriate, so something I'll think a little bit more on. Mr. Strickland?
I would just, um, say, I appreciate those comments a lot. I think using, um, you know, and while this may not happen for you next year, you know, looking at a, a multi-year plan that's coordinated with the, um, the CIP, and I looked to the Townshipwide Traffic Study, which was identified as a priority at one point, had to get pushed back, but then you still have it there, knowing that that's going to be a time-consuming measure, but also cost money, and then you have, um, the Small Area Plan for Pine Grove Mills, the Northland Mobility Study, that were presented as priorities of a supervisor or a few supervisors, and they sat in the CIP then, um, and were within, um, not a restricted fund, but a committed fund to, you know, to put some dollars in there until grants were available to, to pursue some of those activities. So it's, um, and those are helpful guides, so that you, uh, can see, um, you know, other coordinating, um, issues that come up as well. I think it's a great idea.
Any other board members? If not, I, I, I do want to at least acknowledge, uh, joining us online is Supervisor-Elect White, um, who will be starting with us in January, and I do want to at least welcome any feedback that he has, and I would hope the board may be open to any ideas that he has. I, I, again, knowing his term doesn't start till January, but he will be one of our colleagues here in January, and, uh, we, you know, think for, you know, just as goodwill and to have a good cohesive collaborative board, um, we should be welcome to any ideas or feedback that, uh, he may have, so just wanted to throw that out there. Any other? And you're, 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 you're welcome to have to take the floor, Mr. White, if you, if you wanted to.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree with what, uh, Mr. Keo and everybody here was saying, like, having some kind of, um, you know, goal in mind, and then working backwards, uh, working backwards from, you know, that stated objective, really setting the strategic direction of the township, that's a, a, a great framing, and, uh, to be quite honest, is how, uh, I plan to look at the, you know, annual operating budget and the capital improvement plan. These are policy documents that are reflecting our strategic goals, and, uh, very excited to be working with everyone here, and, yeah, working towards those strategic goals. Thank you.
Thank you, and congra- congratulations, uh, Mr. White.
I just one question, Madam Manager. When we have this beginning of January session, will it include kind of the updates to all the items in the stamp program list?
That's a great clarifying question, and I was going to provide, um, just after hearing some of the, the comments. So, so the, the stamp recommendations are something, that's a, that's what we refer to in our, our, you know, principled foundation, is the board sets the policy, so we have that resolution approved. That is a guiding document that informs the workload, it just automatically rolls into things that we're integrating into our work plan. For this discussion, it's looking to all of you, and knowing you all have items of interest, because I've received them from board member requests, uh, you know, via email, and so it's really looking, you know, and it might overlap with some stamp recommendations, it very well might, uh, but it doesn't have to. So it's really going to be reflective of your individual interests that you've been wanting to talk about for some time, or you might, after giving this some deliberate thought, realize there's some additional items, and so it's listing out the items that you would like to see prioritized. And the, the way it's being envisioned, the framework that's envisioned, right, is that as early as December, we would just start to generate a list. What does the list look like, right? And, and how might we get it down to a number of items that are reasonable through consensus-based, you know, whether it's going to be, yeah, I'll say discussion, but ultimately, we'll end up saying, okay, if there's fifteen items, let's get to a priority ranking system. Like, we'll throw them on that, you know, just start to, to list all the things that are, you know, being representative of your individual, individual interests from a legislative, you know, point of view. And then go through a, a process as part of that public dialogue, which one can you all have consensus on is number one?
I'm not sure that that's going to work, because if, if we don't have an update on the stuff that, that's, was in the original kind of guiding document, combined with an update of what the current work plan is, and then the other ideas, we'll have no idea if something that's prioritized one in the session gets to the top or the bottom of the existing thing that's kind of behind the curtain, if you will, right? Like, let's talk, let's throw it all out there, not just what I want out there, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I guess from an operational standpoint, I, anything that you do not have an update on hasn't been started, and it'll get started as time permits.
Yeah. So there used to be, by the way, an update, you used to have like a, here are the stamp program items, and then here's where they are today. So I'm not asking for something that hasn't been done because I don't remember it, I'm just saying, will we have that? So if the answer's no, cool, I just don't think this will work without that, and kind of, kind of what's in the current plan today. Over.
So I'll look to the board just to see, is there interest in wanting to have this conversation, so you can all come with your, your list of items that you would like to be, have discussed, and so I hear you would also like to have some interest in identifying where we are with some of those stamp recommendations. I can tell you, we're still working on the organizational assessment recommendations. So things move slow, but they're moving. A great deal of things have been done since that organizational assessment report that was produced, I think, in maybe December of two thousand twenty-two, and we're moving through that, and we're, we're near complete, but we're now in the medium to low priority recommendation items. And it's also contingent based on what the board is approving funding for.
Right, yeah.
When we know, based on the recommendation, that we would need to bring in some additional assistance for items that we aren't able to do. The stamp recommendation report, I think you bring a really good point, which is certainly at some point, we'll look at and see what have we done that might have initiated the beginning of a recommendation in the stamp program, and we can bring that report forward to the board. But this conversation is really looking, for example, I know there are some interest from some supervisors to talk about regional growth boundary, or economic development. So the purpose of this framework is recognizing that when the board member request items have come through, sometimes they don't get on the agenda right away for discussion, or maybe it gets on for discussion right away, but we just aren't able to move it from an, like, a staffing level. So having this board consensus discussion that ranks and starts to present a clear path as to how we get from the board, the legislative body, items of interest, starting to move forward in the work that we're doing, it's recognizing, it starts with, well, what's the list of this, of the members of the governing body? Like, what are areas of interest that you would like to see done? And maybe it's right out of the stamp program. Maybe it overlaps, maybe it doesn't, but it'll start with the list, and then rank it, and then we look to see, okay, this is a planning and zoning item, for example, or this is a finance item, for example. So if we had started this, I imagine one of the goals might have been convene the tax review board. And then we go through a process where we talk about the scope of work, and there's consensus from the board, and we, we integrate into Q1 of two thousand twenty-six convening the tax review board.
Right. The way I'm seeing this, this is an opportunity for us to present some more, I guess, intensive or staff, staff-intensive type, you know, uh, priorities or, you know, initiatives, instead of, you know, just simply, hey, can we just send a letter off to the senator, or, uh, hey, could we maybe just have a discussion on this? So.
It's a proposed solution to some of the concerns expressed-
Right.
-in the last meeting.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Heller?
Yes, thank you for this, and again, where, where my mind goes, and thinking about what might come before us in January as we have these discussions, I just want to say that this is why it's important that we use, you know, the, the verbs that we're looking for, right? So if it's develop an economic development plan that ensures stability in the next five years, X, Y, Z, by, you know, investigating zoning laws, uh, regulations, duh, 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 by these, these measured things, then we're allowed and able to go ahead and say, well, hold on, here's a small thing within that larger topic that we certainly can do within a year, but these other things are going to take more time. So I'm encouraged by the conversation, and I want to offer that if there's anything I can do in, because of my day job or other experiences I have in portfolio and project management, to help facilitate this, please let me know. Uh, you know, this was a model that we used over in the Finance Committee, where I was offering, you know, perspectives, I'm happy to help. Bottom line, um, to get us onto the right path as we go forward in, in January, but again, I am very excited by having this conversation openly and publicly, and also it's going to be important that we time-box it, right? We can't let discussions and planning go on for months and months and months unless we acknowledge, okay, maybe this is just a planning year, which I don't think we have time for. So, uh, again, happy to support wherever I can.
Thank you, Mr. Heller, and speaking of support, one thing that I have been noticing, even based on some of like, the board member requests coming through, I, I think it's important for us as board members to put in some time and homework and research when we want to present something. I understand sometimes we're like, hey, staff, you know, go look at this, but does staff necessarily have time? I know Pat, um, Ms. Stevens, uh, I think it was during maybe the ADU discussion, I remember us coming out of that particular discussion, you're like, hey, maybe, maybe we should take a little bit more, you know, us as board members take a look, I, I think we may have collaborated on just suggesting, maybe look at what other, you know, municipalities are doing, and then bringing those ideas back, and that information back to the bo- to the board and staff, instead of just putting that entirely on staff to, uh, you know, be looking into. Um, so, you know, I think that is one way you can, we can immensely help, uh, with, with some of those initiatives, is doing some of that, uh, re- research and providing, you know, as much information as we can to staff. Mr. Strickland?
Sorry.
Or, or Miss? Or the manager?
And the, the way I read this too, initially coming in, is it's a way to kind of, uh, it's a, it's just a way to plan to kind of foresee what's coming down the road. So if you, um, say have, you know, as an individual supervisor, know that you're going to bring up, and I'll use, um, single-use plastics as an example, because that is something that was brought up, if you know you're going to bring that up, that would be something to bring up at the start of the year, because you know. Now, of course, things will come up later in the year, and that's why there is that board member request process that we'll talk about another time, but-
Right.
Um, this is, this just gives, um, the board and staff an opportunity to know a little bit about what's going to come, because you do also have, besides those individual requests, the stamp program, and also an, an adopted strategic plan, so that it needs to be referenced kind of in coordination with everything else that's brought up, you know, those kind of, those have to align with the strategic plan, so, and maybe updating the strategic plan is something that somebody wants to bring up. So I think, um, keeping the, the things that we have adopted already in mind, along with those individual requests, but that's how I read it, was just so, you know, if you know you're going to bring something up, go ahead and bring it up, you know, at the start of the year-
Yeah.
-and it can go through that same vetting process that the consent agenda provides for. Again, we'll talk about that another time, but, so, this sounds like a, a very forward-looking approach to me.
Any other feedback?
Other than I'm excited about doing this, I think it's great.
We do have about forty-five minutes remaining in our meeting time this afternoon. If I am correct, there was no action needed on this, this was just discussion? Uh, so if there is nothing further, we would, um, yes, Mr. Patterson? You good? Okay, if not, we have a discussion on, of scope and activation of the tax review board, and I will, uh, recognize the manager.
Thank you, Chair. Right with the agenda is a detailed narrative, this follows a discussion that the board had at a previous, uh, regular meeting, as part of our, excuse me, a previous special meeting, as part of our budget discussions, uh, following the proposed budget, and understanding that the board would like to reconvene the tax review board, and really wanting to make sure that when we move into Q1 of two thousand twenty-six, that the scope of work that we as staff present to the tax review board, it's clear. Uh, I think that, you know, we focus primarily our, our brief discussions around convening the tax review board around- around the budget, uh, revenue side of things, right? In terms of increasing our, enacting a tax increase and it's recognizing.
That was not the supervisors. I just want to be clear, the board did not agree to convene for existing taxes. I want to be clear on that. The motion made was for in the future to do a review of board, right? Not, there were some words said by humans, individual humans on their own behalf. I should be clear, the board decided to convene for the future. I just want to correct that. I, that, I, I was, well, sorry, I was going to say something like in, in the scope, but I, but now that it's like, I, I want to correct that a little bit.
So provided with the agenda is a narrative for your consideration and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it.
Any questions for the manager?
Yes, ma'am, one, manager, just one question. It, it sounds like this is, in, in this, it just says basically operate per the charter.
So provided with the agenda and the narrative, it speaks to the fact that in the Home Rule Charter and the, and the municipal code, the tax review board has a very specific set of tasks that they could follow through when convened. It, it goes beyond approving a tax structured program. So recognizing that when we go to convene at a staff level in Q1 of 2026, the tax review board, their scope of work can go beyond a tax inquiry, a, a tax program, the review of a tax program. So provided in the agenda is bringing recognition that, for example, recommendations to the board of supervisors for a exoneration policy is also part of the tasks that the tax review board could be charged with. And so rather than there be ambiguity when we convene the tax review board, I'm looking for the board of supervisors to have discussion on what exactly, within the Home Rule Charter and the code, do you want to delegate to the tax review board for making recommendations to the board of supervisors? That should come from the governing body. Go through the manager, through staff, to be clearly communicated to the tax review board what their scope of work is. So in the narrative, what's, what ultimately is being presented to the board is bringing awareness that the tax review board's scope of work can go beyond the review of a tax program. And so within the scope of work defined in the code, I'm looking to the board to have that discussion. What do we want? What do you want to be designated as the scope of work? So the tax review board members, when they convene, their scope of work is clear in for, in terms of bringing recommendations back to the board of supervisors.
So, yeah, I did see the, okay. My, my recommendation here is that we stick to the, the charter. Like, we can't pick and choose when we want to use the charter, right? I think we've been on a fairly consistent path for let's do what the charter says, let's follow the charter within the grounds of the charter. So let's do that. And if the tax review board has zero recommendations around exoneration policy, which I think is interesting in the charter, then they need to say, we don't have any recommendations around it and they follow the charter. It is following the charter to say, we don't have anything, we're good. It's following the charter to say, no recommendations. Following the charter saying, our tax program's fine. And it's, it's three words in a, in a report. So I think that, yeah, I'm surprised we're, we're, we're being asked to do something different than the charter when I think we keep getting asked to do what the charter says. So I, so I, I agree with now, if we're going to follow the charter, let's follow the charter, so I, let's go.
Is our tax review board, um, full? Do, do we have enough members?
I, that's a great question. I believe we did look at that and we were able to make, the board did appoint earlier this year. I do believe we have members that would reach a quorum.
I think it's five out of seven.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's five now. Two vacant, there's two vacancies. We'll take applications on our website to fill vacancies.
We have one volunteer for the vacancies.
That's a bomb to hold.
You had your hand up when we called that. Um, was there anyone from the board otherwise that could defer to Mr. Keo? And then, okay, I'd see Mr. Heller just, Mr. Keo's on his way up. Or, oh, Mr. Keo has deferred to you, Mr. Heller.
Oh, okay, well, thank you, Mr. Keo. No, I just wanted to share too with the, those two vacancies, right? And, you know, make the call out there for folks with future financial planning experience um, and expertise in the field for the future financial planning. Uh, love to hear from you. So more to follow up on, I'm sure, offline, but I think that's an important one where having that expertise and getting folks with that experience around the table is important, you know? I've led teams, for example, that were forensic accountants, right? That's a, a special accountant that's looking backwards in many ways. We really need folks that are looking forward, so thank you.
Absolutely. I, I would note, looking at ward representation of our current tax review board, it looks like we don't have anyone from Ward Three. So anyone in Overlook Heights, Park Forest, Park Hills, uh, you know, feel free to send in your application. Mr. Keo. He's, he's working on like to get up out of the chair, in the chair, out of the chair.
I want a chair here. You took some of my thunder away. Uh, it appears that the tax review, the tax review board, uh, requires, uh, two members from each ward, as, as it's written. And we have two members on the tax review board from the first ward and the second ward. Uh, we do not have any current listed members from Ward Three. In addition, the board of supervisors has the responsibility of appointing an at-large person and that person apparently has been appointed, uh, is Kayla Corl. And so we're looking very specifically at Ward Three residents because that's what's called for. It may be that we're going to need to do something above and beyond the normal ABC recruiting work that we do in order to get those applicants. I think it's particularly important, as Mr. Heller mentioned, uh, that we look at individuals who have a skill set that can be contributory to the task that the manager has identified. It, it's not just a matter, in my mind, on this particular ABC, that we fill the seat. It is a matter that maybe we've got somebody who's interested but has no experience and, and we may, we may have to do some targeted recruitment within Ward Three and possibly look at Ward Three supervisor to, to assist in that targeted, uh, process. Uh, because this, this is a, this is a, uh, workload that is, is future oriented and needs to be able to look at the broader picture. Not necessarily, I use the example, just because you're a CPA doesn't mean you, you can do this kind of work or you would be contributory. I think the financial planner concept is a good one in that they frequently have to look to the future as part of their dealing with an individual and their current finances. They could, there are a number of transferable skills there. But I do think that this appointment, these appointments have some special meaning as you are currently going through the process of, uh, uh, ABC. Thank you.
If I may, lean on your experience. Prior to 20 years ago, what specific outputs did this tax review board have? That you've kind of recommended some types of skill sets?
I'm not a good one to ask that question of.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Patterson, it was not a task that I particularly followed or, or, or had any, you know, connection with. The, the obvious to the general public is that the tax review board reviews the taxes that are going to be charged. And that's not what the charter calls for. And so we were, we were chugging along at a pretty respectable financial condition as a township. And, and so there wasn't a lot of spotlight on the issues related to the role of the tax review board. And, and so kind, but now, over the last five years, we have started to look at things that are impacting our financial stability, not, not in the sense that we're going bankrupt, but our financial position. And so I think that's one of the reasons why maybe it's floated closer to the top than it did for the early part of that 20 years. But that's my observation, not my documented evidence.
No, I appreciate that. I think the people that don't mind paying taxes just carried on and people that are now having to pay more taxes might have more to say about it. Just a theory there as well.
All right.
Hey, Mr. .
Any, anyone else? I guess we had already spoken with Mr. Heller. If not, there is a recommended motion in the, uh, packet to convene the tax, reconvene the tax review board. Mr. Patterson?
If I may, my motion was clear from before that we convene that per the charter. I'm still in favor of just do what the charter says. And if there is no recommendation for the things laid out in the charter, then that should just be in the, the output of that, of that, that group that's convened. But I'll, I'll defer to my colleagues on anything, adjustments that we want to make to the charter.
Well, you can't just make adjustments to the charter.
I think this is just asking, staff is just asking us to, to ask them to put together the packet for reconvening them.
Yeah.
So if I may, what is being presented to the board is recognizing that the tax review board, in accordance to the code and the charter, simply acknowledges what their powers and duties can be. The board, the township has not convened in 20 years. So their powers and duties are clearly only evoked based on the direction of the board. Recognizing the scope of work, or I should say in accordance to the, to the charter, the code, their powers and duties are maybe items listed one through five. If we delegate all five items right away, and I can make this decision, but I am looking to the board to see if the board would like to weigh in because items one through five could take a very long time. Meaning it's going to extend for a long time. You will not get an exoneration policy at the same time you're going to get a tax review program initiated. So does, I heard the comments. This is not at all suggesting we're not following the charter. This is a result of, does the board want to acknowledge which powers and duties they can implement? Not have to, but can. What powers and duties was, does this board want to implement? And if you don't have any, it will be created. But if you have priorities and interests, please share them. And if you say all the powers and duties, that's fine too. But the prioritization will likely result in a period of time you will receive recommendations from the tax review board that are staggered. So if the board has specific areas of interest that you would like to prioritize from the powers and duties that could be implemented when they're convened in Q1 of 2026, please share that.
Uh, yes, Mr. Patterson?
This is whoever, uh, whoever cares about this tax review board, please speak up. Otherwise, I, I, it, whoever cares, cared so much to bring it up in the, in, during the meeting, should speak up and say what they want because I'm okay. My motion was very clear. This is not on you, meta-manager. This is the team here. They've got to figure it out. I'm saying my motion was fine. If we want something different, put it out there, but like, we need to move on. This is, this is good enough. The, the original motion was good enough. We don't need more because the discussion back then was about the taxes that are, that were, you know, the, the tax, fire tax. And they said, did the tax review board that hadn't met 20 years review it? I don't know that was thrown out there, but it was. And so like enough, enough already. Like just me and do some stuff and bring back something that says we met and we did some stuff.
And your motion is designed for that to be implemented in accordance to what you've shared. But recognizing that we heard public comment that the manager is dictating, this is a conversation for the board, the elected governing body, to determine if you have specific areas. But it's well within my role and responsibility as township manager to carry this forward and create a prioritization and collaboration in that discussion. But I appreciate what you're sharing. I agree, your motion is set up for that.
Uh, Mr. Heller?
Yes, again, I like this conversation and I think from my perspective with the tax review board, it's important that they're charged with putting and supporting conversation around a long-term strategic plan for taxes and the township to ensure sustainability of services and, um, and support for our citizens. So really an open-ended discussion to have them convene. And I think about them more along the lines of the, of like, again, from my experience, the COG Finance Committee, where maybe they're going to meet more frequently. They're going to get spun back up. They're going to be able to weigh in on certain things along the course. They're not just convened in my estimation to just hear things once and then go back. And, you know, hopefully they get staffed accordingly every time that, you know, we might need them every four or five years. But make this a more recurring, more, um, more immersive experience in shared governance than it has been. So there are a lot of goals and a lot of good things that come from having a tax review board under the, the umbrella of shared governance. So I, I'm good with this. I think that convening them and really setting the tone in January for expectations and hopes as we think about our economic development is, we're just on a firmer footing for shared governance and open and collaborative planning with our citizens on the board. And, but recognizing that the board of supervisors, the buck stops here, right? We will be the ones that will have to make the final decisions when it comes to things which may or may not be popular. But that shared governance is important for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what I just heard was there's a little bit more on the long-term plan and, and kind of seeing what that looks like and bringing some thoughts and prayers about it. But I, I, I don't know that that needs a motion. Again, I mean, there's a motion that says convene. It sounds like we're having some dialogue about kind of where we are, maybe nodding our head and reaching consensus that that's who did care about. This tax reviewer says number four, okay? I'm saying meet the charter, so, all right, I think we're in good shape. And, and meeting the charter does not mean in this first meeting, there's five outputs. Just that, that, it doesn't say thou shall present this to the board, there's none of that. We're expecting like just reasonable stuff. And reasonable, I guess, is very relative.
Absolutely. I just think when your Township Manager brings you back from facilitation of conversations with your Tax Review Board, here's the recommendation that's, this, there will be a recall to this conversation where the board had opportunity to give input for developing that. But you are absolutely correct. It is, we will carry through and carry it forward and see, um, see that process through, where we convene the Tax Review Board, we have those conversations, we establish meetings, and we, and we certainly identify the goal and, and carry it forward and bring back a recommendation to the board. That is absolutely something that will be done and can be done. Just an invitation for the board to weigh in.
And one more, I'll ask one more time, because I've probably asked this twice now. Are there any old documents? And I'm probably asking this a different way now. Are there any old Tax Review Board output documents that say, here's some stuff that it did 20 years and before ago? And it's?
I have not been presented with any documents at this time.
Do we think they were shredded?
I have no comment or awareness of what could have, may have been done. And I'm not saying they exist or existed. I am acknowledging I have not been presented with any at this time.
Based on what I've seen, they probably were hand typed.
I've seen some really good handwritten notes from the past. Like, I'm impressed with the, the, the nice written.
Okay. So because we haven't met in 20 years, and maybe there's no, everything's been shredded from prior to 20 years ago related to Tax Review Board, we're starting from whole cloth. Is that accurate?
Can't confirm or deny if anything's been shredded. But I can say that we are stepping forward with the material that we have accessible to us at this point in time. We will be able to do this charge. So when we have discussions about taxes, it will be with input from the Tax Review Board.
Strike from the record, mine shredded thing.
Yeah.
So, does something exist or does nothing exist? Help me understand, I'm just, it's like, I need a simple answer.
To be fair, I mean, a simple answer is, I, I can tell you, I haven't seen anything. I, I don't know that that necessarily means nothing exist, exists.
Okay.
That means like, I have, to be very transparent, a limited amount of time to prepare for these meetings and do all the things. We've done some preliminary quick look. We haven't seen anything, nothing in the shared drive. We haven't seen anything in the files. That doesn't mean that we just have yet to come across those documents.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Anything else? Mr. Keo?
It would seem to me that the action by the board would be best to authorize the reconvening of the Tax Review Board. End of statement. And then it would be the manager's role to manage that Review Board in terms of the five tasks, see what skills and abilities she has on the board and what their priorities are, and bring those priorities listed to you in some kind of reasonable fashion. But I don't think that your motion needs to micromanage the board. I think that becomes part of the management of the board. They know what their charge is. They're going to sit down and look at those five issues, and they're going to say, you know, maybe a year, maybe two years with a couple of them. But there are a couple of them that can be solved reasonably quickly, especially the exoneration issue. Uh, we know who's being exonerated. There is a list somewhere, uh, because they're on a computer somewhere. And, and the policy for exoneration is relatively cut and dry. It, it follows the law. So some things can come back to you quickly. But I don't think it's your job to tell them which of the five to do first. I think it's the manager's job to work with the Tax Review Board and prioritize the issues that have to be addressed. So I think just a motion to approve the reconstitution of the Tax Review Board and the filling of the vacancies should be the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keo.
Parchment, uh, Mr. Patterson, the parchment has, has crumbled.
Aggraparated.
Oh, jeez.
Sublimated.
I, I was going to say, I don't see any manager's actions as micromanaging. It's just a collaboration and a partnership between the manager and the board. Um, just, you know, just throw that out there.
I think he was talking about micromanaging the Tax Review Board. But I, I actually, I actually agree that the manager should so that they stay within the Charter.
Right, right, you, yeah. Again, there should be, you know, yeah, some structure going of what, you know, roles and responsibilities of them are, and yeah. So, yeah. And I was going to say, every ABC has, has at least a staff contact that, you know, helps oversee and guide the chairman, the chair of those boards, so. Thank, thank you. I might have misunderstood that, but I wanted to.
I think he was talking about the Tax Review Board.
Throw that out there.
Thank you.
Um, any other discussion from the board? Anyone wanted, did, Mr. Patterson, did you take a stab at the motion?
Nope.
Okay, I, I would entertain a motion.
It's already been reconstituted, but feel free to.
Well, however, however to put, move the site or close the item out.
I think there's, did everybody shake their head that maybe number four should be the thing that we hear about first when they, when the Review Board reconvenes in quarter one?
Sure.
Well, Mr. Haller recommended it. God, he said sure.
Mr. Haller?
I'm sorry, was that the, the motion or?
No, no, I'm simply, it just, this is a consensus thing. We're, okay, if the, the manager would like some guidance. The manager's asking for some guidance. And so then this meeting, I'm recommending we give the guidance. It doesn't require a motion, because it's already, there was already a motion to reconvene. In this case, we're saying number four is, is, is the most important, which is kind of that longer tax plan. To establish a long-term tax, sorry, number four is establish a long-term tax plan for the township.
Utilizing the Tax Review Board for kind of the motion, right? That's, I'm sorry, I thought there was a call for a motion, but I'm hearing more of, we're not bringing a motion?
Jeremy entertained a motion. Feel free to make one if you'd like, sir.
Yeah, and then I'll move that the Board of Supervisors direct the Township Manager to prepare the necessary materials and proposed scope of work to reconvene the Tax Review Board in the first quarter of 2026, based on the conversation here today and the scope outlined today for the purposes of evaluating and recommending long-term tax planning strategies consistent with subsection 6.04 of the Ferguson Township Code.
Do we have a second?
This is Lisa, I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Haller, second by Ms. Strickland. Any further discussion?
I would just say that the, you said the discussion today, who's going to confirm what that discussion today is?
Uh, I, I just thought the record would reflect that. And I think there was a call earlier for board input, and I had provided mine. So, um, if there was others, um, I was essentially referencing that.
You said follow the Charter.
Okay.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no?
No.
Okay. Mr. Patterson dissented. Any communications to the board?
Uh, yeah, um, some folks reached out to me about Sylvanview Estates. I think that was in the last meeting. They were concerned about my concerns. Um, and so there's some additional, I guess, information that'll be coming to board in the future. Uh, should be, I guess, positive and maybe ally some concerns. That's all I got right now, thank you.
Okay, and any other communications to the board? I was going to say, I did have two, um, requests of, well, two communications of concern within Overlook Heights regarding, uh, truck traffic that has been forwarded to staff as well as, I believe, the interim chief of police. Uh, and they are, uh, looking at that. Uh, so, Mr. Haller?
Yes, thank you. I had communications related to today's agenda as well as our previous agenda, specifically the item relating to, um, the management or approach for having items put on to our, our supervisors' agendas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haller. Any other communications? If not on calendar items, I would point out, as stated earlier, we are taking applications for our ABCs. The application period is open through November 21st, and I believe we have some dates scheduled in December for interviews. So we hope to have those vacants, all those applications in, um, soon. And then, uh, the vacancies filled, um, in December. And, uh, speaking of getting into the holidays, we did note that our offices will be closed on November 27th for the Thanksgiving holiday. Um, and with nothing else, I believe, I'm not good at reading numerals. I believe it's item number nine today, Ms. Stevens, if you want to present that.
Uh, I move that we adjourn.
All right, we're adjourned. Have a good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.